I call to order the regular meeting of the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, January 8th, 2025. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lynn?
Here.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson's here. Chairperson Carmichael?
Okay, we have a quorum. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And while everybody's standing, anyone and everyone who testifies has to be sworn in, so please raise your right hand and swear that any testimony you give will be the complete truth. Reminder, everyone, please silence your electronic devices, and I don't know if you have signed in, but everyone who testifies has to sign in with their contact information. Next item is the approval of the minutes of our December 11th, 2024 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? So moved. Thomas?
Second, Lavoy.
I have a motion and second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Do we have to?
No, you have to roll call.
We got a roll call, please. Thank you.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes. Minutes approved. Next item is a review of our public hearing procedures. Under the public hearing, we introduce, and the petitioner comes and presents to the commission his and her petition. That's followed by the, our staff, we have the senior village planner, our village attorney, staff comments and background. Then, anyone from the public can come to the podium and weigh in with questions and comments. And finally, to the commissioners for discussion and a vote. A reminder that the vote of this commission is recommending only, that the village board has the final say-so. After this meeting, staff will notify you when and if you'd be scheduled to go before the village board. Old business, we have none under new business. First, we have public hearing, PZC 0332024, a request from Cass Avenue Properties, doing business as Dolce Vita, Dolce Vita Des Spa, the petitioner and owner, and Salon Smith, doing business as Salon 4, for the property at 216 North Cass in Westmont, for the following: A special use permit to allow both petitioners to operate a barber shop and a beauty parlor located on the ground floor in the B1 limited business district. Good evening.
So maybe I'll start. My name is Simon Gomula. I'm an owner and of Dolce Vita Des Spa. We have been here like seven years ago, before the commission, when we were planning to move from La Grange. So we are a small family business. My wife is currently working at the spa, so she couldn't come. So we offer standard spa packages, including massages, including skincare, some specific like Vichy shower treatments, which are kind of unique, and it attracts people from many different locations out of Chicagoland area. So, yeah, I was remembering, I was here like seven years ago. I was talking about our current customer base. We have the loyalty program at this moment, seven years ago. I remember we have around 70 loyal customers coming to our place every month. Now I counted, it's over 240, so we tripled our customer base. So, and they're coming not only from Westmont suburbs, but they're coming from more remote locations. They're coming from Joliet, they're coming from Waukegan, even from the, over the Indianas state border. So our clientele is kind of diverse, not only local, but you know, they're coming to us because they like the atmosphere, they like the family spirit, you know, and they like Westmont because it's quiet neighborhood. Many people from Chicago, the city of Chicago, coming here. And they're saying this is very nice because they have a lot of parking spot, they don't have to look for it. So it's many, many points that the people like coming to this area, to Westmont. So also, we grow our customer base in number, but we also maintain the good quality of our services. Right now, we are at 4.8 out of 5, and the Google reviews out of 167 verified reviews. So that means, you know, we go in quantity, but the quality is also kept, so it's not like we just want to expand by all means. And so for this reason, we kind of overgrew our current location. We were looking for the place to expand slightly. We don't, we didn't want to go like far from here, because we're small business, we don't want to waste time, energy going to like remote villages, you know, some other places, because we see customer comes to us. Other thing is also, yeah, we like this area, so there was no reason to move some far away. And the building next to us, in 216 North Cass, we get some connection with the owner, Mr. John, and he used this building for more like storage, you know, music instrument and equipment storage. So we talked to him, started talking to him like maybe three years ago, about possible maybe you would like to sell it to us and we can make a good, good use of it. So it was like he was hesitant, but finally, after two, almost three years, we made a deal with him. So that was pretty much how we wanted to grow. And let me see. So at the new location, we would like to expand our spa, so add like two rooms for the massage therapy, for the skincare, and also we got Jessica and her friends from the Salon 4, that were looking for a place because their contract expired at the location here, also at Cass Avenue. And we thought at the very beginning, it's a very good, you know, combination for us because we wouldn't use the whole space at the beginning for some long time, I'm guessing, and you know, for them renting the front space, it's kind of beneficial for both of us. And that's pretty much how we are here, both. In the future, we plan to replace the storefronts, or a fight application, Mr. Joe, for this downtown incentive program to replace the storefront, because this is very old, so we will replace frames, glass, and doors, because they kind of absolutely, the old stuff, you know, and we have to replace it. And also, in the, some maybe for the future, we would like to make some use of the garden behind the building, because the building used to be a mixed use, it was commercial and residential, and there's a garage in the back and a backyard. In sometime in the future, we're planning to do maybe some nice garden for customers, for spa customers that can relax, enjoy time before or after services. And we would like to make, also, finally, develop the parking and the back, because it's gravel right now, and we were thinking, you know, to make nice asphalt parking for customers and for our employees, because right now, it's kind of dirty in the winter especially. So that's pretty much the plan for the future. I would say, that's pretty much, I don't want to take too much time, but that's my point, that we'd like to just, you know, stress out.
Certainly. Thank you. Ms. Smith, do you have any comments?
Yes. I just want to introduce myself. I am Jesse Smith. I'm the owner of Salon 4. I've worked in Westmont for 18 years. I was an employee at Karma Salon for 12 years, and then I moved to Jay Wilder Studios at Open Salon 4. Jay Wilder Studios, they just told us two months ago that it's not available anymore starting last week, so we came to Cass Avenue, we wanted to stay, so we just walked up and down, and we stumbled upon them, and this came about, so that worked out perfectly. For our salon, we're a small salon, we have just three stylists, we're all part-time working moms, and we also have one employee who is an assistant, who just does shampooing and general salon maintenance. And the two other stylists have also been working in Westmont since 2008, and we all manage a busy, full client schedule, and we see about 40 to 50 clients a week. And as part-time working moms, we value the ability to like serve our clients and maintain our home life. And the new location at 216 North Cass, as you said, our area on the front will just be like three stylist stations, two shampoo bowls, a waiting area, and like a small break room slash color mixing room. And we've enjoyed working in Westmont for the majority of our careers, and our clients love the ample parking, and we witnessed a lot of growth in the community, and we're excited to continue that in the future. And thank you for your time and consideration.
Certainly. Staff comments?
Thank you, Chair. So we have the two proposed businesses on the property for 216 North Cass Avenue, the property, if you don't know where it's located, north or south of Naperville Road and north of Norfolk Street. It's in our villages downtown. The property itself is a split level. It was a mixed use, as Simon mentioned previously, with a commercial space along Cass Avenue and upstairs, they used to have a dwelling space. Previously, the most recent use of the property was largely used for storage of musical equipment, with some minor sales associated with it, so it wasn't a very active space previously. So tonight, the petitioner is requesting a special use permit to operate two businesses that have been operating in the villages downtown for quite some time. Dolce Vita Des Spa and Salon 4 are both categorized as beauty parlors and a barber shop, because of the services they provide, in conjunction with some of the massage services as well. So in our ordinance, section 7.03, it requires four barber shops and beauty parlors to obtain a special use permit before they can operate or basically renovate the space, to guarantee that the use is allowed there in the B1 district. In our code, we do have some exceptions to that rule. It's under Note 12, which states that such special uses may be permitted with administrative approval if the business space is less than 1,000 square feet. On the attached floor plan, you can see that the space is larger than that, it's 1,600 square feet, so that provision does not apply. Simon and Jessica provided a pretty detailed explanation of their businesses. I'm just going to highlight a few things. So Dolce Vita currently operates just north of this property, at 220 North Cass. They're looking at expanding their business to 216 North Cass, which is of discussion tonight. They have services such as massage therapy, skincare treatment, they have some steam tent therapy, and I believe it's Vichy?
Vichy showers.
Vichy showers. And then they also employ four licensed massage and esthetician therapists, and they look at expanding their employment and services to this property. They have a separate appointment-based system that they use for their services. They primarily operate on Tuesdays through Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for their business. And then they are also looking at leasing the front end to Salon 4, which is why this is a joint application for their uses. Salon 4, as Jessica already mentioned, they've been operating at 36 North Cass previously, and they, because of changes to their lease, they're moving or looking for space to move to. They have a specialization in hair coloring and styling, and they plan on being open Tuesday and Thursday from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturdays. The special use standards are listed below here, 1 through 6. I'm happy to go through them, but they're there for your information. Additionally, we mentioned some parking. There's no parking on the property currently that's striped. There is no requirement in the B1 to require parking for any uses, dependent on how the site is currently developed. Additionally, Simon mentioned some things I'm just going to touch on that aren't in the staff report. He has, he's going through some other approvals with our DIP program, and he mentioned some improvements to the property on the facade and the site later on. That's not of discussion tonight, it's specifically for the spa use and salon. So if he goes forward with some of these other renovations to the exterior of the building, he may come, have to come back and present those changes, depending on how extensive they are. But I'm open to any questions from the commissioners. Thank you.
Regarding the facade, would those changes, would it include removing those bars on the windows? Would he have to come back and?
Likely not for that minor of a change. We look at plans, once they're developed, to see if it needs any approvals through planning and zoning. We have the new DIP program that's kind of coupled with some site plan approvals, so they may come back in for a design critique with the DIP program, but nothing's been formally put on agenda yet, so.
Okay.
He's first here to make sure the use is okay before going through any additional steps in that process.
Thank you. I see no one in the public here, so let's go directly to the commissioners. Commissioner Lynn, would you like to start?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see an issue with the drawing, with the plans. The, is there, is there two uses, or is it, are you sharing the same space then, Boltochi? And, no?
Same building, but the spaces would be like separated, you know?
Oh, yeah.
But the same building. We're gonna go like, take the backside of the building, Dolce Vita, two rooms and the space inside, and the Salon 4 would be like on the front from the Cass Avenue. It's around 600, 600 square feet, I think.
Yeah, it's already kind of separated where the guy stored his music equipment, it's like a little room in the front that will be in, and he'll have the rest of the.
I don't see an issue otherwise, so.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes, I don't have any questions, but I just want to congratulate you, you both really on putting things together and having businesses here in Westmont, and the way you run your businesses. You've been here a long time, you've become a staple in downtown. A lot of people come here because of you, thank you for that, thank you for doing a top-notch facility there, and I'm very supportive of your application here tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
And like the former commissioner said, congratulations, this is a win-win for both of you and for us as a town, you know, you keep the businesses here and no negative impact, except you get to hire more people.
I know, I support it 100%. Good, thank you. Commissioner Peterson?
I don't know if anyone would know this guy, I don't know, but are you going to have signage on the building for both businesses?
I have to think about it, honestly. I mean, we don't plan to put, maybe if you decide.
Yeah, I mean, we were thinking more of just like, I don't know if you know, like how Leah Rose just has like a little sign that's like hangs, you know, just something little like that, and maybe it did on the window, but not like a big light-up sign or anything.
And for your portion, will there be any signage on the building?
Honestly, I didn't think about it yet, but yeah, I think so, something should be there, so.
And Scott, did you say they are or thinking about doing the facade?
I believe they have submitted an application.
The storefronts are already filed to Mr. Joe.
Correct, yeah.
Having the best estimates and everything.
Yeah, it's currently in review.
Yeah.
Okay, so definitely gonna.
They're in the process.
Yeah, the process, yeah.
For a grant under the DIP program?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I didn't understand if they were thinking of it or if they actually did it.
Yeah, yeah, we are already in the process, kind of.
And where do all the employees park if there's no parking there?
There is, there is, we got the space behind the building, just gravel parking, and also.
Behind your other building?
Yeah, and there's only the garage, because it used to be the mixed use, so there is a two-car garage, so we can use it also for parking two cars, you know, worst-case scenario, but there is, so far, there's enough space, because we have like eight or nine spots behind our building on the alley, and also we have space for around another eight to 10 cars in the back, so we can easily like accommodate, I would say, up to 16 cars, plus the garage, so.
Do the people that come to your salon, do they park there, or do they just park in the street or public?
You know, we don't just tell them specifically where to park, so they park where it's easier for them, you know. Mostly our employees park in the back, because it's easier for them, you know, and you know, there's a dance studio next to us, and also when it's like, you know, 5, 6:00 p.m., it's a lot of parents waiting, so they park on our spot, so it's not like we just gonna pursue anybody, you know, because it's enough space.
Yeah, okay.
If you walk, maybe half a block, it's really easy, I think.
Okay, thank you, I have no other questions.
Thank you. I guess I have a quick question for staff. Is this, this would be a change of use, would this trigger a sprinkling requirement?
We, for the commission, we don't look at that specifically. We did have a sit-down meeting with Simon before he went through this process, we provided the information to the Fire Prevention Bureau, to you. Obviously, a lot of the work inside will likely require permits, and for the petitioner, it's pertinent that you reach out to them directly.
Yeah, yeah.
As they have their regulations at the fire department, so.
The permits would trigger?
It could.
Okay.
I can't say for certain, because I don't know exactly the extent of the work on the inside. Like I said, currently, for this, for the discussion tonight, these, they both are just making sure the use is allowed there before presenting any of the plans for permitting purposes.
Okay. Ms. Smith, so you're now out of that space, 36 North Cass.
Yeah.
What kind of a timeline are you looking at? How much time before you can get?
I mean, we're at a temporary space right now.
Oh, okay.
Like a salon suite on Ogden Avenue, so until it's ready, we can stay there.
We would like to start, like moving, April, like first, but it's, you know, that's the plan, we'll see how it goes. This would not be better for us, for everyone.
Okay, thank you. Well, this seems like an excellent fit to me, and, you know, an underused space getting real use again, so. So any other commissioners have any questions or comments? If not, Chair would, would entertain a motion to approve under PZC 0332024, the special use permit to allow both of these petitioners to operate the barber shop and beauty parlor at 216 North Cass.
So moved, Lavoy.
Second, Thomas.
So moved, Thomas, second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Discussion further? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes no. Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes. Okay, so you got a majority vote. Again, staff will contact you when you be scheduled to appear before the village board. Thank you, and good luck.
So much, thanks for your time.
Next item is open forum, and seeing we see no one from the public who would like to make any comment or questions to the commission outside of tonight's agenda. Next item under miscellaneous, we move to general updates and staff report update and discussion. And Senior Planner Williams?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So we have a quick discussion tonight. I was asked to bring up discussion of our current staff reports and how they're kind of outlined and the information provided in them. Because we have some missing commissioners tonight, we might not have a full-fledged discussion, because I want also input from them. We'll likely send out a Google form of some kind, or an email, asking for some opinions on specific questions, once we have this discussion tonight. So just to start, I want to make everyone aware of why we do staff reports in general, and then give some examples of other villages and how they operate. So the purposes of the staff reports that we do, and a lot of planning and zoning commissions do throughout the state, is first to communicate the facts and information to the decision-makers, that's you and the village board, in our processes. Staff provides analysis regarding the regulations and plans that are applicable to any requests coming forward. We want to create a public record that lives on the website through our agendas and our Agenda Center. And then the tail end of it is to educate not just the commission, but also to inform the public about why a request is coming forward, so they have a better understanding, because these are live-streamed, even though we may not have people on it, so we might have people listening, and the videos are recorded. So we want to make sure the public is aware of anything through our staff reports. And then lastly, a lot of times, we have petitioners that also get informed through our staff reports about specifics before they're coming into the meeting. We provide those prior to the meeting to them and to the public through our online Agenda Center. We do have a new Agenda Center, you might have seen the websites, if you go on the website, you might see the calendars a little different now. With that, we have some other changes happening in the future, so. So currently, we have, you've all seen staff reports by us, we've been using a pretty similar format from decades past. They've all been very similar with minor changes, depending on who's writing it and the requests. But largely, they're broken down into six sections. We have the background item, background of the item, which includes the location, zoning designation, the neighborhood characteristics, and then we have the second portion, which is the petitioner's request itself. And the third one is the zoning analysis, where staff gets to geek out on the code, where you get a lot of the code section numbers and some explanation about why that code's relevant in these particular cases, or not relevant. A lot of times, you put in there, that parking's not relevant for the B1 districts, just to remind you that that regulation is in there. And those are common questions we get, and we've put in those staff reports, so we don't have those questions keep coming up after, after we put it in there. So in the zoning analysis, we also talk about the zoning ordinance and on the comprehensive plan designation. We talk pretty in-depth on the comprehensive plan currently. We have, we pull sections from the comp plan and pluck them into the staff report, and then we have entitlement requests, where we lay out each entitlement, and then discuss those entitlements in depth under those sections. And then we always try to put in those standards in the staff report, so you know what your narrow scope of what you're voting on. So for the special use that you had tonight, the special use standards were listed at the end of the staff report, so you are reminded of those six items that you should be voting, or should be tailoring your vote on. Then we have a summary of everything I just talked about again at the end, and then we have the legal, which just tells you, we put up a legal notice in the paper, if it was required or not required, and then we have attachments for the petitioner. Attachments usually are the bulk of the staff, or the staff report section. Now, we've seen, we've looked at tons of municipalities, every place does it differently, so there's no one right way to do it. You kind of tailor it to your community. But with the zoning ordinance update, that we're looking at taking place likely in March for public hearing, after that, we plan on having a, a training on it, and then we plan on having new staff reports, basically, to take over, once we get input from the commission and at the staff level, what we can cut to make it a little more direct, so you understand more exactly what you're voting on that night, without taking out some of the information that might be beneficial. So some of the other municipalities that we've looked at, and you guys all have examples, you don't have to read through them tonight, I'm not asking you to do that, you might have some homework to look at them. We have some examples from Village of Lisle does one, theirs is much more to the point about the request, rather than giving a lot of. Theirs is much more to the point about the request rather than giving a lot of background information. Their background information is largely related to what is before you and not what was there previously on the property. And then they have, lists out the potential motions that can be made. We likely won't do that second part because motions can change. We've had many times where we've split up votes to create motions, so we want to still have that flexibility, so we likely won't go with that in our staff reports. One that we've looked at and we do like is City of Elmhurst, they have, you have their example with you as well. Theirs is shorter, more to the point, but they do provide a pretty, pretty good analysis and some, a lot of it, they have a lot, lot less visuals than I would like personally, but they have some pretty direct requests to shorten up the staff reports. Currently, our staff reports hang around five to eight pages, which is a lot of information, depending on the request. I think tonight's was five pages for a special use request, where we want to be able to trim that down a bit, so it's a little more direct pertaining to the requests. And then City of Naperville, if you look at theirs, theirs is very, very short. It's about one page for their staff reports, for their conditional uses, I should say. Some of their larger projects are a bit longer, but they get right into the request and provide some takeaways, and then they have the findings of fact.
No.
So generally, what I want to know from the commission is what, what is it that you glance over in our current staff reports? What are you not looking at pertaining to the requests that you, it's just fluff information? For example, in our staff reports, we usually consistently put the subdivision regardless of the subdivision's even up for a vote of any kind. So we usually have, I think, for the whole downtown, it's the Bakintosh subdivision that we list there. In my opinion, it's not really pertinent information, it's just kind of fluff. So that's what we're looking at to trim down these staff reports, so it's a little more streamlined, and when you have it in front of you during the meetings, it's more of a cheat sheet for what they're discussing. The other thing that we're looking at, or we would be asking you to look at, is if you've seen other ones, we have a lot of professionals that do a lot of development-esque work, if you have other communities that you say, I really like how they do it, let us know if you have an example. All these are available for the public, just like we do. They make their staff reports available to the public through their web portal, their Agenda Center, so it's easy to find the information, some easier than others, I'll say that. But that's what we're trying to get information on as we move into this, I'm going to say, new zoning ordinance with the training. We're going to put a lot more emphasis on the standards that we have applied than we have done in the past, likely. So we will, for the special use standards, we would like to look at basically tailoring the staff report to look at those specifically. But if anybody has any questions, discussion of any kind, if you're in favor or if you love the staff report how it currently is, let me know. We can talk a bit about it tonight, but we'll, again, we're setting up the forum too, so I like to have a little discussion before I get the emails.
Let me start.
Go ahead.
First of all, I know that there's a, there's a push within the village to minimize paper and do the maximum amount online. I personally find these staff reports and everything in the packet that we get very valuable, both in our preparation and during the meetings. It would be very difficult for me at this point to be strictly online. That said, I think that we, something, the diagrams we have, both when I'm, when I'm going out to look at a property and during the meeting, for example, tonight, the setup of this shop, how it's going to be divided is very helpful. However, I don't need the, a copy of what was posted in Suburban Life and/or the application that the applicant puts in is usually a few pages. Aside from seeing what the individual's handwriting looks like, I don't get a great deal from it.
Yes.
There are certainly opportunities, I think, to cut down on the amount of paper.
Yeah, I think, so we do have, it's generally, through the industry, you will always see the legal notice because we would like to have that as basically a public record of some kind, and the application to know when they submit an application, generally, that's what you see throughout any village. Some of the other attachments definitely could be sorted out a bit clearer. A lot is, when, back in the day, we had cases where they provided the whole architectural plans and submitted it for the commission. Now we sort through them a bit more to see what's pertinent, like the site plans and elevations and those things, but certainly we can look at reducing the attachment section and what we would send or publish forward.
Well, the publication and the application, you know, for the legal record, we need that. You guys do.
Yes.
But we don't.
Correct.
And I kind of agree with Chairperson Carmichael. I never look at the legal notice, and a lot of times I've noticed more recently that on the applications, things are blacked out, you know, so it doesn't even give you any information. So I agree, though, those could be eliminated, you know, from the packet. I know they're long sometimes, but, you know, they do have a lot of useful information. I think there is a way, you know, that we could possibly shorten them, you know, as long as we don't take out too much of the, the personal information.
Yeah, and to jump in on the comments about the applications, Scott and I, over the last few months, have been working on drafting new ones, so right now we're working with an application that's 16 pages long for every single request that could come before you. So we're looking to break that down into having like one application just for variances that should be much shorter, so if they do standard attachments of the staff reports at their current length, they'll likely still be a little bit shorter and hopefully have more direct information related to what they're requesting, as opposed to be something more general for every request.
Can the information that's posted online with the agenda include the application, the legal publication notice, et cetera, but that information would not necessarily be part of the packet?
Yeah, we now have the, we didn't even have the ability before to really post, it was a link to a PDF. Now we have the ability to actually upload the PDFs, so we can always break it out with staff report and then basically staff attachments and then attachments. And you guys would only, we couldn't make it so the commission only sees staff report and the petitioner's attachments rather than having those sent your way.
Anyone else?
I'll share my thoughts.
Sure.
My thoughts are that pretty standard for me, so I read everything you give me. I don't read the legal notice, but I read pretty much everything you give me, and I read it because you wanted me to read it. However, I think that a lot of times we get information that stimulates thought process that may not pertain to the actual request. And I think that sometimes, and I've been guilty of this too, where I'll ask questions that are stimulated by stuff that may not necessarily be pertinent to the actual request by the applicant. And if we could streamline this stuff to, to eliminate that and to streamline thought process that we have to ask questions that relate to the specific request, that would be helpful, because I know that you want to be more than, you want to, you want to give us as much information as you can, but what that does is, especially for some new commissioners that might come on, it's gonna, they're going to be all over the place with questions, and it may not necessarily be focused on the actual request. So that's like one of the big pitfalls that I see, that we end up going down a rabbit hole that doesn't need to go down and, because of the request. And if your information given to us can focus on the request and not, not give us food for thought that will go in a different direction that is unnecessary, that would be helpful. The other thing is, what was evident last week is that because I look at everything, I look at your picture on the front, and it doesn't match the picture of like the village application last week, stuff doesn't match. And when stuff doesn't match like that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be questioning it. So, you know, if we don't have duplication of information, that one shows one thing and one shows another, now I know pictorially that you try to be helpful, but when it doesn't really match what the request is, you know, that, that's problematic too.
Yeah, I think, specific to the last time request, we have, you know, technological restraints, but if we do a staff report, because we're, like I said, we're just using the same staff report that the village has always used.
Yeah.
If we are able to do it, for example, last, last time with the changes in the parcels and everything, to make it clear, we now have some ability to create our own maps.
Yes, you can do an overlay on top of that map and put that what's, what's current and what's being asked right on that, and that simplifies it a lot, because I would not have asked all those questions if it were correct.
If, and this might be a question for everybody, would you prefer, prefer, we do have kind of a lot of visuals in the staff reports currently, are those beneficial? We have like street views and the zoning map picture. Would you prefer those be kept in or?
I like the street view only because when I get my packet, if I can't think in my head which building is which, although I know most of the addresses, you know, it's oh, okay, it's that building, you know, before, and then when I go out there to look before the meeting, it's like I kind of know where to go, but it's not even so much as saving paper in the future because.
Yeah, I'll get to the, yeah, I'll get to that, that's my end discussion thing.
Yeah, I mean, but just to cut down on what we have to look at, how does everyone else feel about the pictures?
Yeah, I liked the pictures on there, and, and maybe I'll also start just by saying thank you for the work that you put into the staff report, Sue, by the way. So, but I could, yes, I could see parts where it could be condensed at times, but I'm glad that you're looking at other villages just as other examples, just to see like how, how things could be done in a better way. For, now, this is my first time seeing the staff report for the village of Elmhurst, but I've, I have, I've, doing architectural work, I've submitted drawings to the village developers many times, and as far as their plan review process, I know that they're one of my favorite as far as like, they seem to be very efficient with how they handle things. Now, I would, I don't know if that, of course, that's, I shouldn't just assume that that spreads to every part of their village, but I would, that's one thing, I'm kind of happy that you looked at their example as one. But anyway, back to what you mentioned, with the visual aids, yeah, that I, I'm, just as you mentioned, I kind of like the street view image, I know it's probably pretty quick to get, but it's helpful.
Yeah, we've seen for the, because the street views are just Google map screenshots, sometimes we go out to the site and take pictures if, for example, that building doesn't exist anymore, we'll go out. If you prefer us to go out to the site and take pictures as it is currently, we can do that. Sometimes the Google map stuff is older. Last time they went around the town, I think it was 2023, but we can always do that if that's the preference for the commission, so that you guys understand the current state of the property. Now, we get into issues with weather and things like that, so the ground might be covered in snow or something, but we can always do that too.
One thing that I see elsewhere is, in Downers for sure, and other, I mean, I've done, done stuff all over the place, but I see when, when you put a site plan together, when you're doing site plan and landscape plan approvals, Downers will require you to go a couple hundred feet beyond the limits, so you can see what the drainage pattern looks like, you can see the other buildings, you can see where those buildings are in relation to the project, and we don't do that here. We're just, you're just looking at the project, and I know that when you see in a big picture, that's very helpful. Now, you don't have to go nutty on it, but it is really helpful to understand what the surroundings are and what the impacts are to neighboring properties when you're looking at an applicant.
Yeah, I think that's a very good point. Just.
We don't always get that, that's.
Yeah, we usually only see it when the applicant does it for the larger projects, where they show a huge aerial.
Right, but even on residential projects like in Downers, if I'm doing a particular lot, I have to show both lots, all improvements, pretty much the building footprints, the topo, you got to, you got to show the drainage pattern, and you got to show what, where these things are, because you just, you can't tell based on the information that you get. You know, yeah, you're walking out there, looking at it before you get here, but still there's information that's very valuable, and I know that several other municipalities do do this.
Sorry, I don't know if, if it's on the same topic, but say on the applicant's side, when they, when they apply for, for any paperwork, you guys, you guys require hard copies for things, right? Or is it?
Yes, so currently, we require hard copies, however, with the changes to applications we're doing, we've been asked to accommodate the electronical versions. We have the ability to print out anything in the office, we have a plotter, so it's, if we need hard copies, we can always make the hard copies or just request one copy from them if we need it. But currently, with how most villages are operating, they're moving to paperless, so we want to be able to accommodate that, and usually that's just done either through a portal or through emailing. Many of the times when I get revisions after the first round of comments for a project, they just submit via email rather than coming in with new hard copies of full-size plans, because that takes time for them to get done, takes time for them to come over and drop them off, so to streamline a little bit for the applicants, we do accept it electronically now.
So, yeah, for, for plan reviews, say, that, that is, was it, did you just mention that the first submission is still by hard copy?
Well, that's what we currently do, but we will be moving to basically allowing them to completely submit digitally. And that was per the request of CDC, so.
And I found it helpful in other communities where I've done work, when the Planning and Zoning Commission's staff report has a recommendation in it or raises concerns or recommends conditions on approval if the commission's inclined to recommend approval. And I did email you a couple examples during the meeting of some other communities' staff reports, which really closely mirror what Westmont does currently as far as the amount of information that's included, but it takes that additional step and has a recommendation.
And we specifically took that out, didn't we, John?
Yeah, the current practice is not to have a recommendation, and that's, I think, going to be reevaluated, but that's a direction that was provided to the Community Development Department.
Well, I'm with John all the way on that, but I want to see that recommendation in there.
That's out of my purview, I can always relay the information, though. Yeah.
And then one thing I would definitely like to get the commission's opinion on is the comprehensive plan section of the staff report. If you had the opportunity to just kind of glance over these during the discussion, you'll notice that the comprehensive plan isn't often mentioned in these staff reports. They're for special uses, conditional uses, and residential variances, so similar, smaller-scale projects that might not have the same impact that the comprehensive plan have on it as such a rezoning or a plan development or a larger project. So for today's special use, there was about three short paragraphs on the comprehensive plan and kind of what it recommends for this part of town. Is that something that you all find useful in getting that level of information on what the comprehensive plan says for even something like, say, a smaller-scale request, or would you prefer kind of what Elmhurst has in their staff report where it's just one line referencing the plan?
One line that said what, that says what?
Yeah, in the Elmhurst staff report, on the second page, they just have one, like, it's one of the bullet point sections that just kind of says what the comprehensive plan does designate, says like the future land use. It doesn't go into as much details as we currently do in our current staff reports.
There's some municipalities that have a number of plans that are referenced. We really only reference the comprehensive plan, but other communities have adopted bike plans, and if it's in compliance with those, for new. bike plans, and if it's in compliance with those, for new developments, those type of things. For our purposes, normally, we have direct quotes in our staff report from the comprehensive plan, which can be beneficial for a lot of larger projects, but we've seen for like special uses, we're really going off the zoning ordinance, not really off the comprehensive plan in depth, because they have, every property has a legal right to make some type of request, especially related uses, although it may not be in conjunction against the comprehensive plan in some way, they still have the legal right to it, so.
Well, I go and look at it anyway if I'm unsure, but it's nicer if I don't have to go look at it if it's given to me, that's my opinion. But what, you know, whatever's easy, it's no big deal to have to look it up.
Either way, for us, it's fine if we want to still include it, we may adjust it slightly so it's more related to the case in some way, probably shorten it a bit, but that's at least our preference, so. What are you raising again?
Well, I appreciate staff determining how much of the comprehensive plan is, is published, I mean, not published, but given to us, because staff is pretty good in determining what's pertinent, what's not, and I, and I don't get lost in the document, you know, and I appreciate that, and that's, that's why I enjoy this, you guys looking at this to make it more productive than that, and I appreciate that, and I support it. That's all I got.
Any other items?
I'll make one other comment, and I'm thinking of projects in the past that we've seen about things that didn't go the way we thought they would go, and in particular, I'm not trying to select this project as a, you know, a pincushion here, but like the project up for Mrs. T's, the pizza place. I know that we got the elevations, the elevations that we got in our package looked nothing like what was actually built. The retaining walls were replaced, that wasn't on the plan, the fence wasn't on the plan, the enclosures to the AC ductwork wasn't on the plan, and I want to see something accurate, and these comments were brought up in our testimony, and then what happens is that now we have to scramble, staff has to scramble, because now you're gonna want to, you know, ask the applicant to do the fence, ask the applicant to do the wall, ask the applicant to do something different because of the exposure that we identified at this meeting, and we ended, it's, it's, it's an after-the-fact kind of thing. So, a sidebar from how you want to trim down information, the other thing is, I want to see accurate information.
Very, very good point. I think the way we can do that at the staff level, and we do this with the village board right now, is we actually label what is for site plans and elevations that are approved, we label the exact document that will be a part of the ordinance as exhibit if it's approved for the village board right now. That might be something we should do here, so you know the exact documents that would move forward and what basically they're, have to abide by.
And I'm saying this because, you know, we get projects that are, you know, ground zero type projects, we're gonna want to see that, and we should see that.
Yeah.
You know, we're gonna want to see that level of detail of building material and what's being used and the color coordinations, and making sure this thing isn't an eyesore coming when it's done, and that's exactly what happened up there. You know, that things had to happen after the fact, and really, there was no, no mechanism in place to actually get that done, other than, you know, requiring it at the, at the staff level before you give it to CO. Even the lighting wasn't right, we had no photometric plan, we had no site lighting on that, we saw it. You know, so there's, there's things that when we're asked to do a site plan review and landscape review, we want to see the, the detail that's accurate, that's actually going to be built, and not something that's just a picture of, well, we think this is what it's going to be, because that's not done elsewhere.
Yeah, so the.
Not done elsewhere.
I've seen even going further than that, I've seen communities that actually bring in the materials themselves.
I bring boards.
Exactly.
This is what the brick is, not what I think it's going to look like.
Right now, we just have them, and usually, a lot of times, it's not colored, it just, it's an architectural elevation, and they just call out what it will be, but they don't show coloring or the exact material texture or anything like that. We can certainly look at being a bit more forthcoming with the petitioners to make sure they're including those items. We do also have to weigh over incumbents on a petitioner, the more you ask from them, the less likely they might be able to come up with the material before putting up a hefty amount of money.
That's true, but there's other municipalities that are, are neighbors, have architectural review boards.
Correct.
Aside from this commission, that look specifically for those building materials that we don't look at at all here. So.
Correct, yeah.
I'm in favor of, I mean, I have a trained eye looking at this stuff, so.
Yes.
What you're talking about as far as trimming down the text, I'm totally okay with, but I want to see, you know, accurate information.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing, at least from you, is the attachment should be better provided by the petitioner.
Very much what you're saying.
It's more beneficial than a beefed-up staff report.
Yeah, and if, and if we have recommendations that, like up on Mrs. T's, we, we saw that north elevation, this is the gateway to Westmont coming down to Cass Avenue, and we got ductwork up the side of the building, and it was identified, and maybe that would have been something that, hey, you need to come back, we need to address that, that's a major deal.
And we had, and for my newer commissioners, that project went through site plan approval for the new building and their proposal, they had put in mechanical equipment that wasn't shown on the approved site plans and elevations, that was much larger than what they showed to the commission and village board. They had to come back in for the landscaping, I believe, to make some additions to it, and that was about it for that one, yeah. I just want to make sure they knew for newer ones, and if lawyers watching or vacancy can catch up, so they understand, so they'll look at the video.
My, I agree with the, where it would, it's not, it's not cool at all to be kind of bait and switched, like with, like between what was presented with what wasn't. On the, on the other, on the flip side, like, and like where, like, I've, I've worked on, I've worked with homeowners, I've worked with, not like, the problems, sometimes there's issues that come up more so with like, say, housing associations than does villages, but when, sometimes housing associations could get, could go even much, much further and want to object to like certain pitches of roofs and certain colors and textures on the buildings, that's where I kind of think that the owner's rights were kind of taken away or being stripped by, like, say, like a housing association or another organization. So I, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want us to go so far as to be able to object to some, to some color, like, I'm just, I'm just wondering where, like, the slippery slope to it, is that, I, again, I don't want it to be where there's a bait and switch, and I would want ductwork and things like that to be covered up. I, I hope it's not something where we would turn into like a housing association type board though either, where, where we like, we kind of put a lot, we infringe on the rights of, of some of the owners and things, but, and I don't know, maybe, maybe the difference is between, say, like, just as you said, like, the Mrs. T's is on a very visible spot, and the village does, probably, like, we, we probably expect maybe a higher caliber to it than maybe like a, like, like a, a single-family home that's, that's tucked away, so may, I don't know what the, if there would be a line to divide, but anyway, those are just some of my thoughts, I'm not trying to give, I'm not, I'm not objecting to anything here, but those are just, I've, I've just seen extremities, extremities in different places.
Yeah, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, usually HOAs have more ability to, whoever's in, whatever property's in their HOA to require certain materials and those sort of things, where the village doesn't for like, single-family homes.
They're under state law.
Sorry.
HOAs are under state law, I believe.
They have covenants.
Yeah, they can record covenants that have architectural standards, et cetera. The village can as well, you wouldn't do it for single-family homes, although you potentially.
You could, we usually do not go into single-family requirements for properties to not overencumber.
Yeah, I've seen some communities go really in-depth into certain commercial corridors, what the architectural, what the architecture must consist of at a minimum.
Yeah, Orland Park is that way very much. You're gonna get that prairie-style architecture with the long roofs and, you know, long eaves and stuff like that, that's characteristic of Orland Park, and they, they will, by the way, that's one that I think they're very good at what they do.
Downtown Wheaton also.
Wheaton, Orland.
We veered off a little bit, but coming back to staff reports, because a lot of your comments were towards the attachments, which it makes a lot more sense, usually those are the visual items, so you probably place more on that than the staff reports, because you have some trust in staff to provide that information, but petitioner's a little different. So, the last thing I just want to touch on is, we have been trying to go paperless for quite some time for our packets. So, right now, we drop off packets at your residency or your business, depending on which you provide to us for that address, in person, every Friday before the meeting. The village board has been paperless for, I think, almost three years now. So what I would like to know, and this can be, we don't have to do this right now, but I'm again sending out that form, if we were to go paperless, we want to know if you're able to do the review of the, the packet material digitally from your house, if you have the capability to, or if you want to be able to not have to print it out on your own and bring it into the commission meeting, if we need to provide any computers, Chromebooks, iPads of some kind, because if we do need to do that, because this isn't really a choice for the commission to go, not go paperless, it's something that most commissions do nowadays. What, what technology would you need if we were to do that, so you are, have the ability to have the information in front of you during the meeting? So, the little screens you have in front of you right now aren't computers, so there's no ability to always have those for you with information, like staff reports and the attachments that you can go through on your own, they're all connected to a single computer. So, you might see that as a question in the form, if you need the technology, a lot of people, really the government, like to have all their, if you're a part of a commission or if you're an employee, to have everything on a government-issued device, so it doesn't conflict with any of your personal information, that's another reason, but we just need to know for budgetary reasons if we need to budget for that in the future, to go paperless or not, so.
I think you covered this, or I asked you this, that if, if, if I use my personal computer and there's a FOIA request, it can only relate, they can't FOIA my whole computer, just the village part?
I believe so, but I would defer to the village attorney, because I'm not the FOIA officer.
Ask that question again, I'm sorry.
If I look at the packets on my home computer with everything else and, and somebody turns in a FOIA request.
Including emails, I just want to, would be on that device. Go ahead, sorry.
If you look at the pack materials on your home computer, yeah?
And, you know, somebody, there's a FOIA, and they want to see what I looked at, or if I responded, they could only FOIA like that little section, they couldn't get everything on my whole computer.
Absolutely not, they, all they could get is any emails that you have sent or received pertaining to public business.
Okay, so they couldn't.
So Scott emails you at your home email address, we would produce that email. If you responded, we would produce that email, and the village would have records of all those emails sent to you and received from you.
Well, I just want to make sure that the rest of my information, if I do this on my home computer, is, is safe and not vulnerable, and I'm not very computer literate, so I just wanted to make sure.
It would be, no one would be entitled under a FOIA request to look at, and you have your personal emails or information, but again, if you're emailing on your personal computer to staff here, or to an applicant, or to a resident about public business, let's say you email a resident, we wouldn't, the village wouldn't necessarily have a record of that, and if there's a FOIA request, we'd say, Jill, you have to do a search and produce all your emails that pertain to public business, like that you had with the resident.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on that for now?
Yeah, maybe, like, it almost sounded like you said about like, for tablets or what, for us to take home, was it?
Yeah, so it would be something along those lines if we were to do, produce it, I'm not saying it's guaranteed or anything, they have to look at budgets and what's, what they need to provide and what that may be, it might be a Chromebook versus an iPad of some kind, but they just want to know, as in, my director wants to know that if we do go paperless, which we're planning on doing, that everybody has the ability to have their email on a computer and they can access it correctly. A lot of times with, with government-issued devices, you're able to come into IT and get some additional help if you're locked out of something for some reason, and they can just take it off your hands and fix it and then give it back to you, so. Because I know, a lot of times, we have issues with emails, so.
What do the village board members do?
I believe they have their own devices, so, as in, like.
Village.
Yeah, village-provided devices, I believe.
What's your timetable on that?
Nothing yet, they have to look at budget, and then we go from there, we have to request, so, so that's it for now. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
That's it on the agenda, our next meeting is on Wednesday, the February 12th, and at time, we should have a new commissioner diswherein to replace Commissioner Scales, who's now been appointed to the village board. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, Thomas.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.